But.
Yeah.
For being at the table.
Sorry, we just came from another work session, but we'll get rolling here. Thank you, everyone, mayors, managers, whoever you feel like, you're welcome to come to table sheriff. Or you can also, it feels like a church meeting. That's okay. Um, no, you really are welcome to come up to the table if you'd like, but um. What? I didn't say anything about you.
Oh, that's contract city should also.
Okay. Um, thanks, everyone for joining us. I'm not sure if we're missing any cities or not, but um.
So easily will be here shortly.
Oh, awesome. Okay. Um, just want to give a little preface to this meeting, um, a little bit of history. Steph will go into that with a little more detail, but not really a lot. In uh, twenty sixteen seventeen, um, there was some conversation among cities. I don't know how many of you were here at that time. I think two of you who I know of. You. Where's your sidekick? Is Russ here? No, not Russ is, is sorry, is the Matt here?
I'm the map.
You're the map, so you were in around, so maybe Tom, you're the only one. In a different role. Same, anyway. It's been eight years since we have had this conversation and um, the commissioners wanted to circle back and have this conversation again. One of the reasons for that, and I, I addressed this a little bit in my email, was um. We're gonna go forward from here on out with the enforcement budget working and operating like a. And enterprise fund. So it's going to be, woo. It's um, gonna be zero base budget where the sheriff's office will. Essentially continue to build the contract cities for their services. And then his office will build the county commissioners for the countywide services. So it will operate like it, like a, an enterprise fund. It's still gonna live in the general fund though, but. That was kind of the catalyst for this conversation. We want to um, review the past. How those enforcement services were separated between the two different uh, different. Uh, roles and how they currently are, and then have a discussion about any changes that we might need to make moving forward. Um, this is not a conversation about mutual aid. That's separate. I've had that conversation a number of times with chief guard and the sheriff. Mutual aid is, I think, understood by everyone. It's, it's not the base. Mutual aid is not the base. So we're talking today about the base budget. Um, any adjustment, when we get into the third item of discussion of future distribution, any adjustment that. May be in the favor of countywide services, just so you understand. Will not be uh, will not result in a tax decrease. Countywide, what we're trying to do is um, minimize any potential tax increase. Um, as you know, um, our studies. Our study is being completed. We have one last step with our pay policy. And what that looks like for us going forward in the future may, may need a tax increase. So we want to have this conversation now so that. We can minimize that if there are any adjustments that needs to be made. So with that, Steph, um, will you pull up the slides, please, Christine? And then I'll have uh, Steph review the, the. The enforcement budget from twenty seventeen, just briefly. Right, not a lot of detail, because that's not what we're.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's important. We're not really here to rehash the past, really, uh, just as Commissioner Bowles said. Uh, and it was December, I think, December twenty sixteen, we had a meeting very similar to this where we had a law enforcement committee. That met and talked about uh, some make possible inequities between. Cities that were uh, contracting with the sheriff's office and cities that weren't. And we tried to evaluate the law enforcement costs, discuss how many deputies. And functions should be paid for out of the general fund, and that was really the nexus of what that meeting was for. And there was some kind of back and a little bit of back and forth. Uh, the, the county sheriff's office started here. The non-contract city started here and we kind of met a little bit in the middle, and it was determined at that time. That thirty-one out of the seventy-two deputies that were in the sheriff's office enforcement division. Uh, would be paid for out of the general fund and the remaining would be paid for out of. Uh, billing to the, to the contract cities. And that actually, that number of thirty-one has stayed the same until uh, this year, twenty twenty-five. Due to uh, some legislation where uh, the state mandated that the sheriff's office hire a uh, school security officer. So that number now is thirty-two, and that's where, like I said, that's where it was back in twenty seventeen. And that's where it has stayed with the exception of that one. So now we're at thirty-two. So I think that's just the history of, of what brought us together before, and I think it's important that we. Uh, meet periodically and just kind of reevaluate. And again, knowing kind of what that past was, but start from, start from zero.
Steph, do you want to go through the first, sorry, three slides and just even, even if we just all read them together? This is what the breakdown was in twenty seventeen.
Right, so in twenty seventeen, that, that, these are the FTEs that make up that number of thirty-one. Uh, there was the, the chief. Uh, one lieutenant who functioned under search and as the search and rescue commander. And then there was a patrol component of four sergeants. Uh, eight general patrol deputies which consisted of K nine and traffic, and then eight recreation deputies that are. Uh, arguably allowed by statute to be paid for at a general fund.
Next, the next slide, Christine.
And then I, in addition to that, and under investigations, they had one lieutenant. And uh, five, five detectives which consisted of one uh, handling fraud and identity theft. Three in our ICAC unit. And one area detective, and then uh, three additional FTEs in strike force and gangs. And then the remaining forty-one at that time, our, our, again, our total number was seventy-two. The remaining forty-one were paid for out of contract or by the contract cities. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay, so that's just a brief history. Um. I guess Stephanie, you were part of that conversation too. I missed you. Um. It's really, it's been really valuable to have Stephanie's uh, input on this. So. Uh, item two on the agenda, then, this is a sheriff. Um. He's just gonna briefly go over what the current split is. Now, um. There are some requests that Julie told me about that will be in the twenty twenty-six year budget request. This is current, so we're going by whatever the split is right now, how the cities are billed right now. So sheriff. Um, the next three slides are yours. I, I guess what I'm looking for is just a, an explanation of where all of these fall, particularly in the countywide services.
Yeah, so thank you all for being here. Um, Stephanie, uh. Got it right. It's, a lot of it hasn't changed a whole lot. But what we see that's changed with the sheriff's office are, are the needs and where these positions actually operate. Right, like right now, there's an increase in demand for ICAC. A lot of police agencies provide uh, assistance with ICAC. Uh, we have a full-time. But the caseload for countywide is so much that we, we, we need additional physicians. And so by bringing these up is, is with those general fund positions, there's a lot of flow back and forth. We go to where the need is. Um, when I first uh, was elected and put in. Uh, former chief Randy Watt uh, explained why he believes that we should contribute to, at the time, it was the real-time crime center. Now it's called ATAC, and we have a general fund position that operates and serves whatever the county's needs are. So, and, and, and this is almost the exact same with some variations to what it is, other than those commissioner bowls. Is it the state mandated that we have a, a school uh. Security chief, and that's something that I know was frustrating for us because it was an unfounded. Unfounded or unfunded, thank you, mandate, and so it comes down to the county to pay for that.
Don't worry, we know how to pronounce that.
Yes. Next slide. So that three, right?
Yeah, there are three.
Okay, did we switch? I, I missed the.
Go up, will you go up to the slide number four?
Yeah.
Sheriff, I think you. Sorry, up to, well, up to four. Yep. Um, the patrol, I think you skipped over the patrol and went to the next slide.
So uh, I can explain a little bit about patrol. You see where there's recreation uh, deputies. Part of the general fund is the influx, as you guys can imagine, with Pine View. Right, in the Upper Valley, COVID, it was hit really well with people not traveling, and we saw a significant increase with those same. Uh, recreation uh, deputies, we call them, most of them come from um, school resource officers. So, which the school pays for uh, about fifty or so percent of that bill.
Yeah, seven, seventy percent of seventy percent.
Yeah, it's, it's a weird deals, but once they're out of school, they go up to Pine View. Yes, you're fine. So, so you see that, uh, the influx and, and Pine View and all that, when we uh, did a survey years ago. That the number one visitor of Pine View come from Salt Lake County, number two is Davis, and then Weaver. And so there's a lot, and then ski resorts produce quite a bit of work. The other challenges that we have with the Upper Valley is just the geography. For example, on a, on a, a good cruise, if you will, takes about thirty-five minutes to get from. From Snow Basin to Powder Mountain, so we have a lot of challenges beating uh, those calls that come out. Um, K nine, as you guys know, I think we're the only one in the county that has a bomb dog, which is used for a lot of. Races, or we get uh, requests to come out and help with those countywide. And then whenever else another agency calls out. Um, that's what those positions are used for. Traffic is diversely used. Uh, especially in the major accidents where we have drones and some other technology that. Uh, many cities don't have. Uh, I know Long Island has a lot of great resources as well that we collaborate on. Uh, next slide.
I think you covered all that one.
Okay. All right, next one. And uh, this is, gets into the, what the cities, contract cities pay for is roughly forty-six. And uh, we base that on a uh, percentage of how many calls. There's a formula that each city. Pulls together and those sources are distributed throughout all the contract cities.
Hey.
All I have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that being said, um, I want to open it up to discussion. Uh, both, I, I invited the cities that have their own police departments for a reason, because um. Because your residents are included in that general countywide um, services that the sheriff talked about. So I just want to hear input, um, questions, concerns. Uh, we aren't necessarily gonna break this down, make any adjustments today, but what I want is the input from all the cities, so. Any thoughts or questions? I'll, I'll share this slide that too. I, I see you taking a picture, Sean. Go forward this, if you want.
I have a question, so um, on, on the contract cities, you say it's based on their calls. Um, is that, is that public information? Could you share those formulas with us? So we could compare it, how we staff our own cities? And see.
The distribution of that portion.
Well, just, just how they decide on the deputies they need in the contract cities.
Right.
It's based on calls.
Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you decide that how many deputies they need in the contract cities, but then. That, that number of deputies, uh, mayor is, is divided out among those cities, and is that the number you're after?
Just, just how you come up with the number deputies they need.
Yeah.
Can I answer that?
Sure, yeah.
So. So when the cities pay their amount, they're not guaranteed, it's one deputy or twenty. We, we treat it as if it's one large city and they share. We also recognize candidly that we have cities that have quite a bit of more um, calls than others. And so in our own cities, it's your own cities, you have areas of your city that have more crime than others, so it's a shared service. And a lot of cities also recognize that, you know, it's their spillover. And you know, sometimes the cities, then why do I pay this when they have more crime than we do? And that's where the, the formula comes in. I believe it's forty percent of the, the bill is based on population, and sixty percent is call volume. It used to run fifty-fifty, but now it's sixty-fourty, because uh, some of the concerns for the cities are like. Well, this city has a lot more crime than we do, why are we paying for that? And they, and they, so. The group meets together and there was a decision to split it. Through the contract city sixty-fourty. That help?
Yeah, so they're, but they're all one, been as one giant.
Yeah, so we, we need X amount of dollars to operate in that forty-six or four, yeah, forty-six number. So they split it up, it's based on formula. How many contract cities are there? Eight right now, well.
Close the camp.
Nine with an.
Yeah, and then soon to be ten with the Upper Valley. It's coming up. That'll change some of this, I'm sure.
It'll change the distribution, but I don't think it would necessarily change that. That number, that forty-six.
So we, we based our formula on a eighteen-month uh. Call load, or what, the calls for service over an eighteen-month period, so it kind of smooths out some of those. Uh, ups and downs, um, and we get that information. Does that come from dispatch calls? Or it did? So we get the information from dispatch. To figure those calls out.
You got your population? Well, population of both caller.
Yes.
I don't have the numbers, but that the population's increasing more in contract cities than non-contract cities. Cause most out west are contracts.
Right.
That's what the population's.
Okay, so let me, let me take another stab at this.
So that, so then I'm thinking them.
I, I understand what you're asking.
Contract.
But that forty-six number. It, it comes from the sheriff, what he needs to patrol contract cities. That number isn't shifting based on other populations who have their own police department. Maybe you were asking the same question.
Kind of, and. Yeah, it just feels like. The contract cities are probably expanding faster than, than non-contract ones.
And I think that the number that forty-six is there now has gone up and down just a little bit over the, over the time that we've been uh, utilizing this formula. But that is that thirty-one. General fund FTE number that I think that's important to concentrate on for the. For the countywide and those that includes the non-contract cities. That's the number that stayed the same and, and it's the, this forty-six number that's kind of gone up and down or up. Based on maybe some of the increasing call volume from the, the contract cities.
That's a better way to answer that. Does that, does that answer your question? That thirty-one, that thirty-one now thirty-two hasn't changed except for the new school security chief.
I think that would be. Part of the conversation we would like to have. Because it was the same question we had in twenty seventeen, whi- which is. The thirty-one now thirty-two number. For those of us who have agencies. We are, we ha- we provide a lot of those services ourselves, so it almost feels like. By sticking with that thirty-one, thirty-two number. We're paying for those services twice. So like, for example. We, you know, our detective department, our ICAC services. We, we have an agency that provides those, so sticking with the thirty-one, thirty-two number is kind of. Where we see a little bit of the connection.
Okay, that's exactly what I want this conversation to be. I want to hear what those concerns are, and. And, and I've talked to the sheriff prior to this about, but. Not working from, not working from thirty-two or thirty-one, but working from zero.
Right.
And saying, okay, chief.
Yeah.
This, yeah, this, yeah, this we have a question on, so that's what I want to hear from you guys, and then we'll follow up with the sheriff on those conversa- on those conversations, questions, concerns, so. Let's get specific and uh, will you roll up, Christie, to, I think we want to look at slide number four. Well, no, number five is what you mentioned somewhere. In the investigations.
Right.
So just let me know where, what your concerns are on that, on that section.
Well, for example, the, the ICAC, we, we. We have a, a detective that works on ICAC. I don't know, chief, how much do we rely on county resources for ICAS?
It's generally through the attorney general's office.
So, and, and maybe we're only one agency.
If he needs help, then he will call the task force, and the sheriff's office is also part of that task force.
Yeah.
So as he needs additional help, if we can't handle it with our own detectives, then he'll contact that task. Which may or may not.
The county.
The county, wherever it's.
Okay.
I think just one point that I, I can bring out, if that's okay. Um, one of the things we've tried to focus on. Is uh, what are the statutory requirements that the sheriff has? Um. That's in, that's in statute. Uh, it's in seventeen twenty-two-two. And I think that there's a child endangerment requirement of the sheriff in there, and, and so I think that's where that came from, just. As an FYI.
Okay, was, was there another one that you?
You can go back to the other, where the other one, uh, twenty-three are? That's nine.
Yeah, slide four.
This is the general fund, right?
Yes.
So, maybe the sheriff can help us understand what the patrol does, for instance, in our city. Since we have our own police force, but.
Careful, you're sorry.
What would, yeah, since we have our own patrol stuff, what is the sheriff? What would the sheriff be doing in our city under patrol?
It's a lot of that mutual aid, it's a lot of backing. If your officers are busy and can't handle priority calls. Most recently, the fire that was on the hill. We, our traffic division, which is mostly general fund, was in North Alton for. Twelve, fifteen hours, and then back the next day. Assisting, so those kind of things. A lot of these. It, it's important to keep in mind too, that a lot of these general fund deputies also have several hats that they wear. So it's not just necessarily a patrol function, but some of them may be SAR commanders as well. Does that make sense?
And to mess me folks.
Yeah.
You know, we, we don't have a fire every year, though.
Well, I hope not.
Yeah, we do appreciate the support. But you know, we have relationships with uh. Pleasant View, Harrisville. I know we've had major, since the other city, brother that kind shows up, we've had Augen, we've had Roy.
It's the same type of thing, it's the same thing, it's just a different uniform.
I guess it's my question, because we have that relationship. With those other forces already, you know, I've been city shows up, but there's a major. Uh. Situation. I mean, it's, which is good, we appreciate it, don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to.
How many do you need? I don't know, but we have to staff for not just you, but the entire county as well. Those general fund positions.
You know, a lot of times, it's a good question, mayor, is, is. I, I don't know if the mayor, or sorry, Commissioner Bowles, I don't think the intent was to go down, uh, certain of the path, but. Cause we have data and numbers that show what we do, but to answer your question on this. Is by statute, there's, there's a level of service that we have available. Right, it's kind of like insurance, if you will. A lot of us don't like paying for insurance, but we ask different levels of insurance. That when you do have, when you do need it, you have it. So like, if we were to designate a handful of patrol guys that are general fund, they would be roaming. All the valley, and you know, upper valley in case it's needed. A lot of times we go through neighborhoods of every city, a lot of times we back up if, if. Another city has traffic stop, we'll, we'll stop out and see if they need backup service, could be a DUI arrest. That we're helping and assisting on. Uh, sometimes it's asked, and sometimes it's, it's not asked, right? Um, our drone team is, is become pretty robust lately, and along with that, they work real well with the uh, traffic. So there's a lot of tools that a lot of cities don't have that is available for if they do want to, if that makes sense. I don't know if that helps you, or she or not. Sheriff. On your, on your A, let's say you're, you're, you're four or you're eight. That doesn't mean eight times. However many employees it takes to cover eight people every day. Is that? Eight, that inc- that creates how many? Boots on the ground? Does eight provide when you consider? Um. Their capacity to respond? Is it, is it two employees per day? Is it? What is, what is eight equivalent? What's the equivalent? Boots on the ground.
For the recreation deputies up here.
Yeah, we, we use recreation and even, even, even SAR, if you will. Like if you, you got one to ten, that's obvious, that's that one person. You know, eight hours a day, you know, five days a week. I don't, so I'll limit it to that.
Recreation deputies, just dealing with them where we are operational on Pine View, it's. Two deputies a day, but not twenty-four hour coverage.
Okay.
I think we're into twelve-hour coverage with twelve left uncovered.
So we're not looking at eight employees all over the county doing their thing.
No.
We're looking at. A fewer number, because you're covering annual sick leave, training.
Yeah, that's it, nobody has time off, it's two a day. If we have somebody calling sick, we take them, it would be one.
Would be none. Right, 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 those, I'm just. Curious about that.
Yeah, I think, Tom, if you, if it's to make things really simple, you have four shifts, right? You have a. The, a day shift and a grave shift, and then you flip-flop halfway in the week, so. Essentially, eight FTEs would cover, would have be two, two deputies. On, um, on duty at a time, twenty-four, twenty-four seven.
Okay, thank you.
So, so can I ask a follow-up then?
Yes.
Then. Then that thirty-two number. That were, that the contract cities are. Are paying for does not equate to thirty-two employees.
It, it's thirty-two employees, thirty-two FTEs, full-time. It's thirty-two employees, but that doesn't mean we have thirty-two people.
They're not all working twenty-four hours a day, seventy.
It's not thirty-two on every shift, it's thirty-two divided by four shifts.
Well, in, in general fund, really, you look at general fund as, as thirty-two, it's not just the contract cities that are paying, it's the entire county. And that really is the shared services fund. Um, that brings a lot to the table, so everybody is paying for that thirty-two, but that, you're right, that doesn't. In theory, you could say it's four shifts, but you're not getting twenty-four hour coverage out of those thirty-two.
So this is the. Countywide general fund operations that are going on, is that correct?
Correct.
And looking at the thirty-two as the countywide. So, all people in the county are paying for this position, whether you're a contract city or not. So you take the contracts out of it. Are you, am I wrong to say that this is the core? That even if you have no contract cities. It totally, totally throw those guys off the, the side of the cliff, or maybe just get them out of the way. Aw, no, 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 but this is the core that, that sheriff's office says, okay. No contract cities, this is what it would take to. Be secure in Weaver County?
Correct.
Whether by statute or by experience.
I think that's.
Is that wrong?
I mean, that's a fair statement.
Sheriff, I would just say, so every city benefits from that, I get that, we get that. I, I think. Non-contract cities, just, we don't want to double pay, we don't want to pay more than we, we really have to, because we're paying for our own. I think you know that. So as long as you're running the math, you're analyzing population increase. Uh, how much of the contract cities paying and where the resource is going. So, as long as, but run those numbers off, your populations are changing, calls are, are changing. Longer analyzing the data often.
Coverage is changing is what I think is the result of what you're saying.
Yeah.
So, so in general, the, the non-contract cities are, are saying, just take a look at what services we're providing. If we don't, if we don't need that coverage, if we don't need that, or we don't feel like we need the, you know, the roaming deputies who are countywide and. Um, patrolling your city, and that's the conversation that we want to consider.
Right. Yeah, because even the two traffic. Roaming, right? If the majority of your, if the new. Majority of your traffic is happening on the west, then. Then. By default, that, there are less roaming hours. To the east, for example. Because of the population and traffic patterns are changing. Um, and so. Is it, is it, does it continue to bear out that we really should be sharing too?
I think it's also important to remember, it says traffic up there, but again, going back to the hats. We have a metro crash team in the county, but most, if not all, agencies. We have a metro crash team in the county, that most, if not all agencies participate in, but that Weber County and Ogden is taking the lead on. Um, in investing in equipment and things like that. So those two traffic deputies aren't just out necessarily writing tickets to the citizens of Weber County, but they're assisting in. Uh, major crashes in non-contract cities and in contract cities. I think, um, we have nine, the types of traffic sergeant today, nine, uh, major crashes. In non-contract cities that they've been called out to help with, so that that's part of their hat, so when you, when you look at this and it says. Patrol and lieutenant and SAR, just re-realize it's not that they're out doing the job necessarily of your officers and your agencies. But they're doing other things in that shared services to help citizens of the county as a whole.
That brings up a a point, Chief Guard, that, um, I think we can take a look at, you mentioned the metro crash team and and there's the, um, strike force. And I know all the agencies contribute either. Money or officers to those special teams, is that correct? So, so I think we can take a look at, you know, if there's a, if there's a police department, Roy say, that's contributing to that. Then that's their contribution, if the county's contributing it, contributing to it, I would. I would think that that would be on our unincorporated part, that's the unincorporated cities, or the unincorporated part of the of the county. Oh, we need to contribute either a deputy or or money, so. I think that's. Both. And then, and so you're saying, yeah, as the as the contract and then also countywide. So that might be a conversation that we can get a little more into, um. Any thoughts on that, on? If your agency is contributing to one of those special units, um. Would that be considered your contribution, and therefore your residents wouldn't necessarily need to contribute through countywide taxes?
Don't they try to rotate that every few years? Everybody involved in that.
Having experienced plows, been for five years. So some agencies have full-time positions, smaller agencies. Often, well, some smaller agencies have a three-year rotation in it, other agencies just do strictly financial fund execution.
What I was gonna say earlier is, you know, contract cities are, I guess you all say they're double taxed also. And we create a contract. But then we also have to pay the Weber County tax on our taxes, just like everybody else. It's like we pay for our own police service.
Right.
And then we pay in the county.
Right.
Thirty-two, just like everybody else, so.
That's the basis of this is, i-if everyone's paying for countywide, and then everyone's paying for their own. That should be equal throughout the county, right, I should pay countywide as a resident, and I should also pay for my city's coverage. And the same goes for.
Far West.
Far West, and the same, none of us up here, the same goes for you, Summer, you live in North Ogden, so you should pay for your countywide services. And you should pay for your police service, so that's why we want to make sure that these numbers are where where they should be. And that everyone's being billed fairly.
Sure, just a point of clarification on the degradation. Did I hear that fifty percent of that's paid by typically the state, that's seventy, seventy?
So, uh, I would encourage, I know the chiefs in here were involved, um. With the conversations with the school district, I would absolutely encourage mayors to get involved, because our contract's coming up again. Uh, at the end of this school year, we have to renegotiate, it's quite an interesting form. So they pay for. In this current year, seventy percent. Of the the officer or the deputy's salary for the hundred and eighty-two days that they're in school. So it's not a true seventy percent, it's seventy percent of a hundred and eighty-two days. Thirty percent of that goes back on to the cities, the contract cities, and the county. In theory, you would think the school district should be paying a hundred percent of a hundred and eighty-two days, because it's really our third contract. Right, that the sheriff's office has, that Roy City, Riverdale, South Ogden has with, they they have a contract with the district as well. So that that, just some history, that's kind of that formula, it was. Was a very interesting. Session, right, Chief Park?
Chief, i-isn't there intent to get up to a hundred percent, or has that never been said?
That was our intent going into the contract. The district doesn't have that intent.
School district's theory is that they should not have to pay for our school resource officers, because we would be there anyway. Is there a theory? If a call, if we were needed, so it's it's been quite a challenge with school district on this.
Yet now you have an obligation to be in every school, every minute.
Yes.
Therefore.
Yes.
You are statutorily required, probably wrong word, but you're required to be there.
Or contract, and this is where this group would be.
Direction of the state.
To us, every, every, even Ogden City, I know they got a, I think a better deal than we do in terms of dollars. But, uh, yeah, if we're there to bell to bell every day, they should pay the full freight, that's our opinion. How is overhead allocated, is it allocated in the same ratio? Like Sheriff Arben. It's part of your salary to the contract cities. Why, my salary is to the jail.
Yeah, so the sheriff is general fund, ju- sheriff's paid by everybody.
Yeah, I'll just some example, how is overhead?
But overhead, so we take, um, we take the percentage of deputies, so right now it's forty-one percent. And we allocate that through our total budget, so that includes the overhead.
Enforcement budget.
Enforcement budget.
You asking about what the bill is to the contract cities? Yeah, how 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 is included there? Uh, Stephanie, correctly going wrong, but when, when I got here, Scott Park created a, uh, spreadsheet. And there's this much for the deputy, there's this much for supervision, there's this much for our. Uh, whatever services the county provides in HR, and there's. That's all paid for top to bottom, I I.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a cost allocation, uh, that the part that you're talking about, are you talking about overhead within like the county?
What's allocated to the, yeah, contract cities? As part of their cost in regards to the older hair hospital.
Yeah, so right now, i-it it's, it's the full cost of the sheriff's law enforcement, uh, division budget. Is what's allocated, so it's all included, overhead as well.
And I don't know what's an important budget.
It's just separate from the jail, so, so the jail is a, is strictly countywide, so we take that out of it, that's in a separate budget, that's a separate department. So all of the citizens in Weber County pay for that in a, at a hundred percent, really, um. But the law enforcement budget, we carve out, and that is just patrol investigations, um. Whatever's included in in what, uh, um, law enforcement patrol police department would pay for.
I think, is your question, how how are we arriving at the cost per deputy?
Well, the cost of everything, I guess, not just the deputy, but it's, it's curious, the, uh, the sheriff's just allocated within the jail. Why would that be?
Because if, uh, the way that we handle, uh, this, um, calculation on our contract cities. If we included Sheriff Arben in with our law enforcement budget, then, and. I think an unequal share would be paid for by the contract cities, because of the way that we split it up percentage-wise, so because.
Sheriff, other than just the general.
Yes, correct. Right, ev-every taxpayer in Weber County is paying the same. Port portion of the sheriff, the sheriff person's budget.
Sheriff spends no time on contract cities.
I think what you're saying is that the the sheriff. Regardless of the contract cities, set them aside again. To operate the county law enforcement. You would have to have a sheriff. If you're gonna have a sheriff, regardless of if you have a contract city you're on. Or let's just make it, let's make believe that all contract cities have their own police department, everyone's the same. And you had to have law enforcement, the question is, would you have a sheriff? And would general fund pay for the sheriff?
I would say yes, regardless if we did or didn't.
Well, right, like officials, the entire county's paying their salaries, right, he's elected official. The region is more about in business, place of the business, that matter. He's a Kevin Pepper.
Because I think what you're, what you're looking at, wanting to clarify today is, here are the core positions. Whether or not, well, here are your core positions for all residents of the county. Countywide. With or without contract city, again, we can, we can assume something else for them, but these are the base numbers that you would need. And make those contract, that to make the general fund. Keeping the peace in Weber County. Stable, funded correctly, with the right amount of personnel to make that happen, is that wrong?
I don't think that's wrong, I think part of the assumption, though, is that every contract city instead has their own department. Is that fair to say?
That's right, yeah, so you're looking at that that base level, whether anyone, well, you've got, whether anyone has, well. Everyone has their, in this, in this, you know, mindset is, everyone has their own police department. And. But you have to have the sheriff. Statutorily in a county to keep the peace. Correct me where I'm wrong, team, you have to have that base. The things that are outside and above that base that's been identified here, sheriff must be there, you have to have some leadership. You have to have some, some operation, you have to have a building to work in, you have core. A core structure that must be there, regardless. Regardless if every one of our cities had our own police department, they would have to be there.
Right.
And I, and and this discussion today is, is that where it needs to be?
Exactly.
And are we at that point, Sheriff, you have to be here, regardless. Whether, whether you show up to, to, to Washington Terrace, or to South Ogden, North Ogden, doesn't matter. You are part of that core, your administrative staff is part of that core, there there's certain positions in that core that that must be there.
You can, you can say that, Tom, but if the sheriff is spending a lot of time on contract cities. Then he needs deputies to do other things, so then the question comes in, is how many deputies do you need?
That's right, and that was part of that, that scenario.
So, I mean, you can, you can take it both sides of the, the argument there. I'm not picking on Sheriff Arban, appreciate the job he does, but but the fact is. I'm interested to see how many things are put into the general fund, because yes, you do have to have a certain structure. But when your population grows so, so much in these contract cities. The sheriff has to have somebody to, deputies and things of that nature, if he's not spending the time there. Right? So I mean, it's, I'd just be interested to see, in the general fund budget, how many of the. You know, what's classified as general and common overhead, uh, you know, et cetera. At some point in time, not today.
Okay. I want to go to that side of the room, because I I feel like you guys are, I want to be part of this conversation, so Mayor.
I had a question about the contract cities, because they're kind of talking about being treated as their own police departments. Uh, do they, do they provide a staff from the back into ICAC from, say, each contract? Um, city, or like through strike force? Or, you know what I mean, like a, like, a non-contract provider, and the general fund provides one to. Uh, so, do the contract cities need staff, the strike force, staff, those things?
No, no, that's just part of the, the general fund positions that were identified.
And then, uh, I don't have any idea, I have an idea how, I suppose, in the contract cities, like the population of the contract.
I think Steph can pull it up.
Um, so I'm showing a population, uh, with the eight cities and unincorporated of. Um, seventy-eight thousand nine hundred, so about seventy-nine thousand.
Thanks, that's fast.
Well, just to clarify on that, they are not making the contribution either in money or personnel. By non-contract cities.
Correct.
Why, why would that be?
That's a great question.
We're looking at, at, can you put the slides back up, thirsty? I think we're looking at slide number five, Mayor. Specifically those three bottom ones.
What's your, I'm sorry, man, Sheriff, what was that question again, I was typing other notes.
Both were non-contract cities, if I understand this right, we're either making. Monetary contribution to the strike force, or providing personnel on a rotating basis, is that correct? Sheriff checking said, so my question is, if we're doing that, why aren't contract cities doing that?
I would have to check with our financial person at the sheriff's office and see if that's included in the billing. For the contract cities, a portion of that strike force fee, they don't provide personnel, no, because that's not a level of service that they do. But I would have to double check with Julie and see if that's part of that, and I would imagine it would be. Along with CSI, along with the metro, uh. Crash team, the game task force, all of that, I I think that's part of that billing, so they.
Yeah, I I don't know, because I don't.
Yeah, so I I know, like, for CSI, for example, uh, there's a baseline based on percentage of each city. And for the sheriff's office, we take each of our contract cities independently to come up with that base. So we're not just paying the base of one city, we're paying for the base for every city, so CSI, I'm confident that we're. We're contributing the way it is, I'm gonna pull up, um, SWAT. Cause I think there is a component there, but I can't remember how it's, how it's figured.
So I think the adjustment, if there would be an adjustment, it would be if we check with Julie. And that, and those things are not being billed, then I think they would need to be billed, or they would need to be assigned to the contracts. If they are, then I think that would satisfy. Yeah, we'll check with Julie and see. Any other questions, any other questions from that end of the room? Sheriff, Chief Guard, any follow-up? Tom?
Sheriff, I'm forgetting for overspeaking my opportunity, is anyone building their minute? From the floor to here, okay. What's the, would it be out of line to say, what's the meeting after the meeting? When everybody walks out here and they go, what about this thing? What about those things, is there something that, that? That you all need to say, okay, where where are we at, how can we be most helpful? As we all know, we we all lead these meetings, and then we have a meeting after the meeting, whether it's standing on the corner. Whether it's just in the lobby, or whether it's in a headlock in the back room, I don't know, but. Would that be helpful, but? Is that a bad idea to say, okay, where are we at?
No, my, so my intent for this meeting is to gather the comments that we've heard. More if there are, we can stay here a little bit longer if we need to, um. And then, what I wanted to do is just let you all know, especially those who have multiple representatives here. Because I think you'll probably go back and have conversations, right, you guys will have conversations, you guys. Clusters within your city will have conversations, additional information might come out, and I would ask that. Uh, you email me, I'll share it with the other commissioners, the next step for us will be to take all the input that we're getting. Um, concerns, questions, we can get questions answered from your finance team, things like that, take all the information. And then sit down with the sheriff and his and his enforcement chief, and talk about the number thirty-two, essentially, so that's my intent. Cause I know there will be conversations, Chief.
Are you sure of the slides?
Yeah, yeah, we'll send those, um, are you guys okay if I eliminate the twenty-seventeen ones? That's just kind of a history, that's not really relevant, I think, I'll just, I'll just whittle it down and show the twenty-twenty-five. Um, so that we don't get any confusion on, I tried to make them look similar in the breakdown, but, anyway. But I think that would be the next step, Tom. Yeah.
I I'm not trying to cause problems.
Okay, we want this discussion, Sheriff.
First to me a little bit, um, so you said the, the. The non-contracts, no, the contract cities and the, uh, unincorporated is about seventy-nine thousand, they got about forty-six. Officers. officers, so that's, it's less than one per thousand, right?
Point five-seven.
What's a point five-seven? So, um, I mean, I, and I'm just guessing, because I don't know what North Ogden has, I bet they have about twenty to twenty-three officers. And you got about twenty thousand people.
Depends on if you're, I'm about the state population committee.
And South Ogden's like seventeen thousand, so probably twenty officers. Riverdale's a little messed up, we have twenty-two officers, but we, you know, our population in the day is higher than the night, we, we probably, we could leave us out, but, you know, it's not normal, but, uh, uh, who else?
Roy, yeah, Roy.
Thirty-nine, forty-one officers, thirty-nine thousand, so that's holding pretty good, actually. So like almost a thousand, one per thousand is across the county, and so, it seems like now, I know the people in those, out in those western areas don't break the law like the rest of the states. That's why we could have, we could have two for that. No, it just, it's just curious, just interesting, like, the, the ratio's a little bit off, on, on southern areas. I don't know if that means anything or not, but it's just about.
I, I think it's part of the conversation, we've had this conversation, um, in budget about adding additional deputies to the contract cities. And, and I see where you're going, you're looking more of a, a shift of the ratio, it would shift the ratio if you add more, um. So, but I think we want to look at both parts of that, we want to look at just a, a increase for contract cities. And also, we want to just nail down that number thirty-two and make sure that's where we need to be.
And has the thirty-one, thirty-two been cleared back since twenty-seventeen?
Thirty-one was twenty-seventeen, I don't know, it was done a few years before that, Stephanie.
Yeah.
Was it still thirty-one, like back in about twenty?
Um, we, we didn't, the formula wasn't managed the same, so we didn't identify general fund deputies, we just did like a fifty-fifty split before that. So, it was a little bit different.
And then we just added the school, safety chief, yes.
In nineteen ninety-seven, we were all general fund. Far West City was the first one to sign on as a contract, number thirty hours of work in ninety-seven or ninety-eight, ninety-six, somewhere in there. And I think, uh, Washington Terrace, uh, let go of their agency, joined, and now we started to incorporate. And then it become a, a challenge of sheriff, former sheriff Slater, Derek, can speak more to that, if, if someone wants to talk to him after this meeting. But that's where it evolved from.
I think it, a lot of it came way back then from the community resource officer grants that were, that were available and, and we used to contract based on negotiations within each city on how many, how many deputies they wanted. And then it's evolved into this other formula, so.
One thing that's done, it's always changed, it's always changing.
I just have a question, you talked about certain things are statutorily required. We know what the breakout is, of what's statutorily required versus what's not on thirty-two.
We'll have attorneys here, I don't know if you want to take this, or if you, okay.
Well, uh, I'll defer to Liam, we've been talking about this and. Next I'll let you say the statute, as far as what the sheriff's responsibility is.
Well, so, I mean, you're talking about providing law enforcement services statute. I mean, there's a lot of duties that the sheriff has statutorily, and we can go over those, there's a lot. Um, but the sheriff does have the overarching requirement to preserve peace, right, that's, that's the big one, everybody talks about, the requirement to preserve the peace. And sheriff as a county employee, that duty generally applies to the county as a whole, right, preserve the peace in the county. So that's kind of where initially he derives his authority from. Um, if you're asking about specifically, does he have the authority to provide law enforcement services within a municipality? The code does provide him the ability to contract for law enforcement services with any municipality, right? So, and if he contracts, he has to keep those obligations, so there is that. Um, I don't know how specifically you're looking for that code language.
I'm just looking to say, if, if we assign those thirty-two people, for instance, we really appreciate the drone, don't get me wrong, we have drones. But is that statutorily required?
The drones?
If we have somebody that's, you know, of the, I'm just trying to say, the thirty-two people there, and I understand, the authority that's tested in the sheriff, but one of those are statutorily required. Where there is no, is all thirty-two of those are statutorily required?
Yeah, so, I mean, there is discretion, the sheriff does have discretion to decide what it takes to keep the peace, right, in the county. But there is, there is a degree of discretion, because statute doesn't specifically lay out every item the sheriff has to provide in enforcement services. Um, so that's where it becomes kind of a negotiation between the cities and the sheriff's office of what they want. If you're gonna contract with the sheriff, the cities who have contracted what they want from the sheriff. Um, drones, no, it doesn't specifically mention drones, right, but it's, just goes back to his authority to keep the peace.
The super easy one is corrections, that is outlined in the statute, that's countywide, it's the enforcement piece. The authority to provide enforcement services, certainly there under the code, but delineating out into those specific areas. I'm going off of memory here, and I may be wrong, but I don't recall those specific themes being listed under the statute. So I think it would be in a discussion with the cities, to determine what services are actually needed to avoid any duplicative services that are being double paid for and just, allocating where our resources actually need to go, and I think that's the whole point of the conversation. It does, it's gonna get a little bit of a trophy with those enforcement outputs, but the authority to actually go is there.
He's always in your city.
Well.
After hours.
This is just a, a larger view, you can ask your old chiefs, what are the struggles that we have in the county? There's some things that we don't have or don't do, because we don't have the re- total resources. When we checked our Spelman system, we've got twenty-four thousand active warrants in Weber County. Sheriff's office used to have a team that would just go out and do warrants. And from my knowledge, and I could be wrong, the chiefs are here, but we don't have active teams just going out for warrants. We, we get them through our business as usual practices. So, as leaders, does the public want that, or do they not want it, and then who does it, right? And the other thing right now that's a, a really big deal is the marshal service and ICE. They want a lot, and the public is reaching out to me, why aren't we doing more to solve this problem? And it's frankly, I don't have the resources, I don't think our other agencies do, so to, to, uh, Chris's point, there's stuff that we're doing now that may be duplicated, but there's a lot of stuff that we're not doing, any of us, because we don't have the resources. Size, so does it become, uh, each agency responsibility, or is it the county, right? And so these are the discussions that I know, uh, Commissioner, uh, Bolus wanted to bring up.
And that's a good point, if we've got duplicated things, we ought to get rid of those. If we're, you know, working together, uh, cities, and maybe allocate the resources to things we're not doing. Because there is limited resources in, in, yeah, right, and cities. So if we can identify what's duplicate to.
Sure.
And not spend money on that, but spend it on warrants or things like that, that makes sense.
Yeah, I honestly, I would love to take some of these general fund and turn loose on the warrants, and with ICE and some other stuff, we could do some really great things. But in, in every law enforcement individual in here, where's the priority and what is the need right now? Because the law enforcement is constantly changing, rhythm and flows, the prime happen all the time, we've seen our own cities, the county, and that's what we're, we dreamt. I, I would love to have, uh, forty more deputies to accomplish all that that I explained. But there, there's budget constraints, and you all experienced that, well, there, there, there's some work that needs to be done, yeah, I agree.
I think to your point, uh, mayor and sheriff, um, in, in follow-up emails, if I get follow-up emails from you cities, I would love to hear that. Are your officers doing warrants, are your officer, you know, what's their involvement with, with ICAC? And, and how often do they reach out to sheriff's office, that kind of information, I think would be useful, and, and like you said, sheriff, if we can free up some of those resources for other countywide needs, great, and if we don't have a countywide need, we push those out to the contracts and give them even better coverage, so. Yeah, if we need to shift things around, that's absolutely what we're after, and that's our intent of this whole discussion, so. Okay, commissioners, you have anything else?
Yeah, I just, what it boils down to, I think that we really want to try to get a handle on that we would, ask for your feedback, as Commissioner Bowles said, is, as we look at this, I'm gonna call potential duplication in services in your, and I'm talking about the cities that have it or departments. Is, are the services, the value you're receiving for those thirty-two people you saw up here, worth that dollar? And, or is there a duplication that is better, that money's better spent somewhere else? I think that's, in my own opinion, that's what I need to hear, uh, I hate duplication of service, I think it's easy for government to do that at all levels. I think the more we can eliminate that, and we definitely need to check in to see if those services are being charged to the city, and they, to the cities with, with existing departments, they should also be charged to the contract cities. I didn't hear that we know for sure whether that's happening or not, so, we need to look at those services, again, what's fair to fair, uh, and I speak from a standpoint, soon to be in a city that will be a contract city, I, possibly. It may be with another county, but it would then be a contract city, don't worry the other, but, anyway, I think that's what, uh, that's what I think that we really need to hear, is, okay, is there duplication, there's so wide, how do we balance that out? Um, and we really look for those with departments to make that information available, it comes down to a level of service. We can't provide everybody in this county with a level of service that probably everybody wants, we just don't have the financial, uh, I guess we have the ability, but I don't think we have the willpower to raise taxes to that point, so. Uh, I appreciate any input, I think we'd appreciate your input, as we're getting into budget sessions here very soon. Um, probably the sooner the better we hear that, so, that's it.
Yeah, just my one thing takeaway, I appreciate, I've made a lot of notes here, but one of the things that our sheriff's office has been telling us, in our work sessions, that you, Mayor Mitchell, when you talked about the number of, uh, people in your respective police forces versus the number of citizenry, the, the difference that our sheriffs have is how spread out it is. But they go to Plain City and Hooper, it's a lot different than going from, uh, you know, from the Walmart or the Target over to, trains or whatever, mentioning. So. Makes it, yeah, I think it's the same, it's the same thing, but it's a lot of takeaways, and again, this is so that we're being, fiduciarily responsible with the, our, as we come into our, our, our budget system, uh, budget, which is, uh, on the regular calendar year, not the fiscal calendar of all you, so, so, thank you.
Yes, Sheriff.
So with that thirty-two number, you guys, even though you have, so you have your own police departments, but we are too, you're sheriff. If you have questions, come see me, we'll make time to answer questions, we'll roll out the numbers. But, uh, yeah, and, and every year, we invite all of you to our banquet. And some say, we don't come because it's not our police department, well, in fact, it is, it's obviously your jail. So please, any questions, come out, ask me, it's, there's no clothes, nothing there, just ask. And we would love to answer all those questions that you have, and if we need the data, we'll pull it and find it.
Thanks, Sheriff, appreciate that, uh, and one la- one last thing before we go. If nothing changes, and, and we get the concerns, and we have the conversations, and we work with cities and sheriff and, and our finance teams both, and, and it stays at thirty-two, then we can all move forward saying, we revisited this after eight years, and it hasn't changed. So, that's really what we want, as commissioners, we want, we just want to validate that number, so. All right, now go have your meetings after the meeting and, and get back with us. Yes.
Wanted to say one thing, just because I'm a representative of contract cities, don't forget us, we're the guys who laid the golden eighteens. And, uh, we have a limited of the population, our fog, our cost, people on the, higher and higher. Have twenty-five hundred residents, and our, our police bill is, uh, almost five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so, whatever you could do to make it a little bit easier on the contract cities, we're all paying, all we can pay, believe me. And there ought to be something that can be done to kind of streamline the services. Of course, I'd like to see the county pitch in a little bit more to help the sheriff a little bit, but it's, uh, kind of a never-ending, uh, never-ending job, take those dollars around, but, keep the contract cities in mind, because we need the help.
I think our aim is to make sure that it's being done fairly, and, um, I was a mayor when, when the change came in twenty-seventeen, and, you know, I did, I went back to my council, and, and I just let them know, there, there have been some adjustments, and, and this is now our fair share, and, and that's our obligation, so. We're working to be fair to everybody. Okay, we'll move to item four then, commissioners.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries, thank you, I appreciate it.